I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for our regular July meeting, July 11th. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas here.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Here.
Commissioner Anton.
Here.
Commissioner Pell.
Here.
Commissioner Fleet. Chairman Richard.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, if you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While everybody's standing, please, anybody has to, I've got to swear you in if you're going to give any testimony tonight, either for or against. So if you want to talk tonight, you've got to be sworn in. So I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Under penalty of death. We're getting tough here.
Chairman Richard's hand.
Wow, that's a little-known codicil. Favor university.
Please that we silence any and all electronic devices, of which I'm guilty. And we do not have the minutes of our June 13th meeting. Counselor, do we have to have a motion to just delay it, or would we just put it off?
Motion to postpone.
Okay, entertain a motion to postpone the reading of the June 13 minutes.
So move. Second?
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet? Oh, that's right. Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, the motion is hereby adopted. First item under new business, planning and zoning item 12-025, the Village of Westmont, regarding a zoning code text amendment as follows. A, amend Article 4, Appendix A, Section 4.05, Paragraph E, to permit firewood enclosures in the rear yard under certain circumstances. Now, I will ask for staff to present this, but I want to clarify everything this evening. Counselor, I rely on your expertise. We are here to consider a text amendment to permit storage of firewood in the rear yards, side yards, rear yards, where it is not permitted now.
That's correct.
According to our codes. And that is the only thing we are considering now. We are not considering any extenuating circumstances of existing. Okay, so if we could, staff?
Thank you, Chairman Richard. The zoning code, as previously noted, does not address firewood storage in residential districts, and therefore, firewood storage is not allowed. The staff is proposing a text amendment to allow firewood to be stored in the rear yard only with specific requirements. Specific regulations would allow reasonable amounts of firewood to be stored for residents who heat their homes with wood-burning stoves or fireplaces. Staff used other local ordinances as a starting point, and since the staff report, we've learned more about cords and the typical delivery size of firewood. Previously, we recommended that 32 square feet be a reasonable square footage for a maximum size of firewood storage, with a four-foot height limitation, and perhaps 48 square feet might be a more reasonable size based on types of firewood that is delivered. We're recommending that firewood be neatly stacked in a pile, be comprised of raw lumber, not use any chemically-treated or glued wood that might create a burning hazard, and it would not be allowed to be stored in any setbacks or easements. And with that, we'll entertain any questions or comments?
And just to add, that that would be limited to a height of four feet.
Okay, very good. Since we have a member of the public here, do you wish to comment at all, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please, if you would, give us your name and sign in.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Again, sir, just to remind you, as I reminded the board, the only issue we are considering here tonight is whether we should have a text amendment to allow the storing of firewood in the backyard.
Yes, sir.
Which is not allowed now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm all for people storing firewood. I know people have stoves, people heat their houses, which, you know, this way. My concern is the height, the width, where is it going to be put? And I believe I understood this woman here as saying it's not, you know, in easements or anything like that. I mean, that's my whole concern, is height. Where is it going to be put? How much is going to be allowed? And that's, people have to, you know, burn the firewood, that's fine. But that's my concern. And all I would like to see is just a reasonable height, four feet, five feet, as long, you know, as it's on somebody's property.
Mm-hmm.
And not on a property line or an easement, where things are going to be falling all over and neatly kept. And I don't know how this is going to be regulated, but that's my concern, and that's why I'm here today. And it's just, and also, you know, being with the cleanup and that, because there is more carpenter ants that come with this, more rodents that come with this, and if it is on a property line, guess who gets the rodents and ants? So that's my concern, and that's why I showed up. I believe you all will make the right, proper decisions, and that's all I have to say.
Are you a Westmont resident?
Oh, yes, we've been living in this village, let's see, we start our 27th year now.
Oh, great. And where do you live? What is your address?
My address is 23461st Street.
61st Street, okay. And do you store wood yourself?
No, sir.
So you don't burn, you know, or you might have a gas fireplace, or no fireplace?
I convert, it's a new home. We had the option of either wood or gas, but gas is cleaner, and it's not a mess, and I can't be digging and cleaning things, so that's what we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll start with the commissioners. Commissioner Pell, since you're on a roll, why don't we keep on going?
I guess I never realized, I see so many people burning wood, I never realized that we didn't have any ordinances, and it's probably the kind of thing, I'm not really a huge ordinance guy, I don't think I've ever, it's probably something that's not really been a need for it, because most people have used common sense in it. I'm not sure that this is precipitated by a non-common sense type of thing. So let me understand what the proposal is here. Jill, you mentioned 32 square feet. Now, I had 30 feet in my original proposal.
Yes, you're correct. We had previously suggested 30 square feet as.
So that's ground area.
Right.
So if you're going to go with 48, so you could conceivably have a six-by-eight-foot pad, and then it could go up to four-foot high. And now, is it advisable to have firewood raised a little off the ground to lessen the opportunity for rodent nesting and things like that? And if so, should that be attached into the 48 inches? Like an offset of six inches or something? Almost like a shelf or a ledge, if you would?
Or a proof container.
Because that then, I would think that you'd have a better chance of carpenter ants and rodents if the wood is seated on the ground. And that if it's raised up a little, that probably lessens that opportunity just a little bit. I'm not a huge expert in this, but I'm guessing. Now, the four-foot height, you mentioned in checking delivery, so is this in comparison with a cord delivery?
Yes.
And is that how they come four-foot high, as a cord usually?
I don't know if they get, Sheena, I don't think they get quite that high, do they?
Yeah, we learned more about the area of cords than the height.
Than the height.
The height recommendation of four feet was just based on not wanting to replicate a fence, essentially, and also to keep it at a reasonable level so that it's not toppling over, because the more that you stack, possibly, the less stable it can be.
Commissioner Pell, to the best of my knowledge, a cord is delineated by four-foot in height, four-foot in width, eight-foot in length. That's a full cord. A face cord is 16 inches in width, four-foot high, eight-foot long.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It would never be taller than four feet.
That's how they measure it for, if you're going to quantify it, if you want a full cord or whatever.
For delivery.
Plus, I also do that, I know that, because if a big log falls down on a kid, they don't want it to be too tall.
Right.
So there's always been a safety factor to keep it lower.
Moment.
So that fella wouldn't hurt anybody.
Okay.
So I guess my thought is, from a more of an unfamiliar standpoint, is that I don't know if this is allowing a person who heats or cooks, and I don't know how many people are left who are cooking on wood, but if this gives them enough wood for a winter, I wouldn't think so. And typically, you think of people laying in a supply of wood, so I don't know if this is big enough. I certainly think the height is, but I'm not sure that the length of it is. What I would like to see attached to this is that it be outside of easements and that kind of stuff, and away from property lines, but I'd like to define that even more stringently, and say that it has to be closer, I think this is somebody's responsibility to keep this closer to their house than to their neighbor's house. And so I would rather see something like this allow for more wood, not necessarily higher, but more, so that people who really rely on this method of heating and things like that can store enough wood adequately to take care of their needs, but that it be, you know, either 10 feet off a property line, or it has to be kept more adjacent to a house. I would ask if some of my fellow commissioners could perhaps help me with the wording on that, because I don't think we've ever faced something exactly like this, but I just think where you could have a possible nuisance, either vandalism with stuff being knocked over, rodents, insects and things like that, it should be certainly closer to your house than to your neighbor's house.
True.
That's my feel.
It's not smart to store the wood next to the house, though.
Right, I understand that.
You want it separate?
Correct.
Or because insects, where they can migrate into the house.
Mm-hmm. And I know you want to keep it somewhat convenient to get.
Of course.
So you don't want to put it at the back fence line, where you've got to trudge through three feet of snow, if we ever get snow again, to go ahead and bring wood into the house. But I also think that there has to be, there has to be more of a buffer for neighbors and things like that.
My wife hates carrying wood too far.
Okay.
She wants it close.
Very nice, thank you. Those are my comments.
Again, I, you did recommend that we store it off the ground with perhaps pressure-treated lumber, or on a gravel base for drainage, because just for common sense, you don't want wood on the ground, it's going to rot.
It will rot, they have to be burning it up a lot more quickly.
Correct.
Yeah.
And it'd be more susceptible to infestation of insects.
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Anton?
He just said everything I was going to say.
Okay, pass.
Oh, no, okay. I would think, one thing he said that I agreed with, which is rare, is I think you should have at least a year's worth or near that amount, maybe a cord, you know, a full cord would be what you could, the footprint we should have for that, I think. And I, I guess there's two things, and then closer to the house, I guess. I have mine set up against my back fence on my property, and what I do is I pick up a certain amount, big bundle full, and I bring it to the back door and leave it by the back door, so I can reach out and grab it in the wintertime and bring it in. But the main, the main stuff is away from the house because of that reason, the bugs and everything else, and you've got to put it up on edge two-by-fours and blocks and stuff, and keep it all up on that. But you don't want to have too much, though, because also, if you don't, like you said, Shannon, if you don't rotate the wood and move the wood, it gets full of ants, critters, termites, everything else. Yeah, it's a fine line there, but I like, I think you should have enough room, though, maybe more than a 32 square feet or whatever we have initially. But the height-wise, it shouldn't be any higher than any fence would be, or anything that would be safe for kids to be around. They don't want a pile falling over on a bunch of kids, or a kid and killing a kid. So I think four feet to five feet would be what I would recommend, too. You can't have a fence that's over four feet typically, or whatever it is, and you shouldn't have a woodpile sticking up higher near on a property than a fences, right?
He has another comment.
Yes, sir, please come up, use a microphone so the home audience can hear you.
Okay. It's six feet on fences.
Correct.
On some fences, yeah. On some fences? Because I had to get a fence, and I was told six feet, that's it. That's all.
The maximum height of a fence is six feet.
Unless you're on a corner, you have a side yard, and you can't have six feet, there's...
Then it could be three or four.
Three or four, but the maximum is six feet.
And I think that's too high. I think six feet, it's too high for a kid that's three feet, that's got a little bit of time to fall off there and bonk them on the head. Six feet's a little excessive, I think.
Anybody stores firewood over four foot is a fool. There you go. That's all I got. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I, I'm going to go back way before all of this and say that, long before this came up, and long after it's been here, people have been heating with wood, probably more so in the past than in the present. This is an anecdotal thing. This is two people. Are you going to make the whole village respond? We've had no problem. I can see a problem here. The problem is the structure he's using to store it in. Why don't you go after that and leave it alone?
Well...
This has not been a problem, ever. And all the time, we've been burning wood and storing wood. I've got two people I know in this village heat 100% with wood. Two cords, nothing. They have no problem with storage, they have no problem with ants, they don't have any problem with rodents. I'm just saying, why legislate? If you've got a problem here, it's solve the problem. He's got a 12-foot structure there, storing wood in it, on a property line. It's a fence. It's an illegal structure. Go after that. Leave it alone after that. That's my...
Okay, but Commissioner Van Buren, I'll point out...
Quickly.
I was going to bring out, Commissioner Van Buren, it's illegal to store firewood... Thank you. ...in the yard now.
Because we don't have anything, any ordinance?
Exactly. So we have to create an ordinance.
Why?
So people can store firewood.
They do, and they have been for, since day one.
Right, but they're in violation of the code technically.
We're in violation of the codes.
There would be no legal relief to offer anyone that's storing it if we did get a complaint about it.
Okay, now you're going to make, because of a situation between two parties in this village, you're going to make everybody respond. Are they going to need a special use if they're going to have to store more than two cords?
That hasn't come up before the commission yet. That can be something that's discussed, if that's a question that you have, but that's not something that was recommended in the staff report.
I just don't, I just don't, I don't feel it should be legislated.
Okay.
I just like to add that I agree with you, and that's why I was saying, I hate to see senseless and extra legislation.
No.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I, for one, obviously violated, you know, the ordinance, or whatever, lack of ordinance. I used to burn firewood, and I had bought a storage thing, it was a circular thing, and it was off the ground, so I do suggest whatever we do, if we're going to have an ordinance, you know, that it be at least off the ground, you know, stored off the ground, not on the ground, because of what everybody has said about the ants and things, and possibility of rodents. As far as size, the typical person in town probably burns recreationally, you know, they do it in their fireplace, so a cord is more than sufficient for a winter, you know, unless you're burning every single day, you know, a typical person isn't going to be impacted by a limit, a restriction. As far as restricting people, I think we have some lots in town that are extremely large, and significantly on the south end of town, where people could store probably four cords of wood, and you wouldn't even realize that they had four cords of wood, you know, so I'm kind of in agreement that we should kind of look at some sort of ordinance, but limiting it to one cord might affect some people's ability to store the wood that they need and have the yard for. I mean, down where I live, I mean, you know, it's just, there's a number of people that have extremely large lots. So they should be able to utilize that land, and it's not going to affect their neighbors. However, I'm definitely for four-foot height limit, no more than four foot, you know. I even go buy a place that sells wood, they don't even store it over four foot, unless it's in a pile, and then they're usually moving it out, but if they've got it stacked, there's rows and rows of four-foot-high stacks.
Absolutely.
So, you know, if the guys that are selling it are stacking it in four foot, there's a reason. So we should abide by that as well. And other than that, these are my comments, you know.
Commissioner Thomas?
I don't think we have, I burn wood recreationally, fire pit, and in, I'm a lawbreaker, apparently. And, but I don't think we have enough information, as far as people who burn wood, like people that you know, we don't have enough information at the present time to know what kind of volume that entails, and I don't think we should be legislating that. I think we should leave it open, in case if something comes up in the future, they can come before us and look, and that can be dealt with then, but I don't think we can, I think we should do the height, as far as you were saying, staying about the safety, but as far as length and square footage, I'm not that comfortable with that. But everything else makes sense. That's all I have.
When I first saw this, to be quite honest with you, I resented that it was even here. I just could not understand a unit of government intruding on what I would consider my private property, where I pay significant real estate taxes, $8,000 a year, that they should even have a say-so on this. But then, listening to some sage advice from Commissioner Van Buren here, who usually keeps me straight, I went out and I asked staff as to what preceded this, and then they appraised us of what's going on, you've got it in your briefing packet there. And I've been in violation for 32 years, and I probably stored two cords right now.
I got cuffed somewhere, I know I do.
So, sorry, Wally, but I've got to disagree with you here, because we have to make this legal. I can understand, I can understand that.
Why? It hasn't been since year one. Either you go put everybody in violation, you're going to have, you're going to have an entourage of people coming here to get variances.
Give me one second, I need to confer with attorney here.
While they're doing that, one of the points that might be salient here is that that number was tossed out as a starting point, so obviously, there's some room to, you know, figure from there.
That goes back to what Commissioner Thomas just said. Are we ready for this? We don't know.
Well, given some of the feedback that we've received, 48 square feet might be reasonable. If you gentlemen do not feel that that's a reasonable number, we should keep talking through that. And if that number is to be increased, there's always the option of, yes, asking for relief from the requirement.
Then you've got to have the people to come here for relief. They haven't been here since year one.
It typically...
This is one anecdotal situation.
It typically...
Which we would have never even been here unless it has happened.
It typically comes up as a complaint-based item.
If I could, village attorney would have something clarify this for us.
I think we've all discussed the fact that there is a situation within the village with two different homeowners who live next door to each other in a specific incident, or incidents still exist. Unfortunately, if we don't make rules as to how this can work, we don't have anything to prevent that sort of thing from occurring, or to go after somebody we believe is in violation, because there's nothing to be violated. There's no law.
There is, though. In this particular instance, there is an illegal structure.
Which is, I think, what we're trying to regulate at this point.
No, no, it's the structure.
What the size of the structures are.
The structure, not the firewood. The structure is 12 feet high. It's an illegal structure. We have everything on the books for structures. We have nothing on the books for firewood.
That could have just been a plant just to make it the issue. Maybe the firewood isn't even really the issue, they wanted to put the wall up.
I am saying, there has never been a need for this. You should never allow anecdotal situations to be your steering on legislation. It's a very slippery slope to do that. There is a violation here. Go after the violation, but don't go after it with an elephant gun. You need a mouse gun.
I still think that most people, and I think most of you have discussed the fact that you store firewood on or in something, not just stacking the wood itself on the ground. I think you've all discussed the fact that that's probably not the best way to store wood, anyway.
Who cares? Who knows? It's been going on.
But the point is, is I think, because it's in containers, in general practice, that we need to regulate those kinds of containers and structures that are used.
Why all of a sudden now, when we haven't had to do that for all these years? It's never even been an issue.
No, I think I disagree with you when you say stored in a container. Firewood is stored in the open.
Well, there are containers that you can put in.
Firewood is stored, everybody I know stores it either on a bed of gravel for a couple of pressure-treated two-by-fours, and they just let the weather roll right off of it. There is no structure, no plywood, no tarpaulins, nothing. It's exposed to the weather.
Okay, Wally, how about, yes, you can store firewood in the town, and it can't be over four feet tall, and that's it?
Well, what about if you want it in the rear yard of somebody's house, or on the side yard or front yard?
As soon as you go over six feet, or over the, in the rear yard, you go over six feet, then you're violating the fence ordinance.
True.
You're talking height, Wally.
Height.
Yeah. No, no.
I think what they're asking is for something to say that you can have firewood, something to base it off of and have a baseline. And if you want to be more open to the people, because it hasn't been regulated ever, and you don't want to put size and quantity amounts, why not say it can't be over a certain height, and you can have firewood? That's it.
May I ask a question of staff?
That looks very vague.
How many of the surrounding communities have no ordinances, like us?
I researched about, maybe eight to 10 of them, and I would say a third, maybe a third didn't have anything. It's a lot of, a lot of the more rural communities where I think it's, where you see more fire burning fireplaces.
But I noticed in our list that we got pretty far out in some of the places we were looking at.
Mm-hmm.
And I was looking at, you know, Green Bay, and even Hanover Park, I was thinking more like Hinsdale, Clardon Hills, Downers Grove, Darien, Woodridge, Lombard. The towns that are but us, Oak Brook, do they have ordinances, or, because that's more, I don't know that Green Bay is exactly as comparable to us, and Oakdale, I'm not sure where Oakdale, Minnesota is, but Olyth, Kansas. I was just more curious about right here in this general area. So you didn't hit everyone right around us?
I hit most of the ones around us, but a lot of those ones did not have the...
Did not.
...regulations.
Because it's, I think, as Commissioner Van Buren has said, it hasn't come up as an issue. Well, I'm sort of split on this one also. I'm sort of an anti-legislation person, and I think where legislation is not needed, we have way too many laws in this country and too little common sense. And so my points were more to understand if we have to craft an ordinance or a text amendment, how that would be worded. I certainly would favor leaving it alone, or having something much more general, if that's possible. But it seems to me also that if there is, if the information we've been provided is the precipitating event for this, it seems like there is several areas of violation with that. It's my understanding.
Could I make a suggestion, that if we do something, that it be as simple as what was said before, that no wood shall be stored more than four feet in height, and not in easements? And just leave it at that.
How about property line?
Well, typically, or within five foot of a property line, because in some cases, well, where I live, we have easements on the sidewalk. well, where I live, we have easements on the sidewalks, so there's virtually no way I could, on one side of my house, store wood, but I could on the other, because it's a pretty good distance on the other side. But I definitely could store it in the back, but I'd have to keep it away from the easements. You know, nobody's gonna store it in the front yard, so you limit it, no front yard, side yards, and, and rear yards are acceptable to, but no, not on easements, and no, no closer than five foot from a property line.
And perhaps keeping it out of setbacks.
And don't put a limit on it.
New setbacks, if you want.
You know, yeah, whatever, something like that, so that it's, you know what? If somebody can store 10 cords of wood, which I highly doubt, but if somebody could store that much wood, be our guest, but would you ever want to, you know?
Not my yard, I could probably get 10 pieces.
Yeah, you know where I'm going. So you're not limiting the people, but you have something on the books.
I like that.
And, but you're limiting to the height, and it's away from the property.
Some kind of guidance, otherwise you give no guidance to the board. What if they decide to throw something in there?
Well, I keep saying, why anything? You already have violations that you can go after. If that's, if that precipitated this whole thing, and when you take care of that, it'll go away. And you probably won't hear for the rest of your tenure on this floor.
Sir?
I understand what this gentleman is saying, okay? But there is the problem of dealing with people who do not keep the place neat and orderly.
Okay, that becomes a personality situation, and it becomes a feud. And that's, I think, what we really are dealing with. We have a situation here where perhaps you think the other person is unreasonable.
No, that's not it. It's not that point, it's just a point that we have, I believe there has to be some, something here, because the wood is just, it's gonna be everywhere. And I'm not talking everybody does this, but it's just, I mean, you can't have it on a property line and an easement. I have to spend more money for insecticide fertilizer, I had to call it an exterminator for the rodents, and thank God, this year alone, there's been some wild cats coming around there, and they feed pretty good. But there has to be something, a height away from the property line. I'm not trying to cause waves, I'm just, there has to be something here where we have, I mean, four feet, five feet, that's fine.
Do you realize that you are the first person in the history of this village who has ever come up with this issue?
Yeah.
Do you think there will be another one?
I hope not.
I do too.
I hope not.
I do too.
If everybody used common sense and was, we wouldn't be here. But that's not the case. There has to be some fairness on both sides. And that's all I have to say. I mean, because I'm surviving on disability, and every year, I gotta fork out money to keep these ants and rodents off of my new home. And that's not fair to me.
As I see it right now, there's a, a structure which presumably ostensibly maybe, might be considered illegal, that's in the process of being litigated.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's not what we're talking about tonight?
That's not what we're talking about whatsoever. I'm just saying that, I think that's-
All right, so if I, so if I'm burning wood, and neighbor has her, stands my neighbor, he's hanging his washout to dry, and he complains to the village because I'm burning wood and it's smoky. As it stands right now, the village can't do anything because there's no, there's no, nothing to keep me from burning wood.
As it stands right now, my understanding is it's not permitted. Is that correct, Dan Murray? Is burning of firewood permitted?
I believe it is.
Wood storage.
We're talking about the storage of it.
About storage?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think what you're talking about potentially could be-
Misleading.
An environmental issue, as far as what you're burning, that could become an issue at some point.
What are you, you're burning the wash? What are you burning?
The wood.
The wood?
Burning wood, he said.
No, he said the thing about hanging-
Getting in your wash that's being-
You have your rolled clothes hanging in line, you get suit on your clothes, just like you did when the trains went by in 1890.
Yes, sir. Do you have something to say?
I believe this gentleman is, what the fire department told me, is that the only thing you can burn outside is a seasoned-cut fire log. You can't burn grass, you can't burn brush, you can't cut down trees and burn trees. And I believe what this gentleman was saying, which the fire department told me, is that once this smoke invades somebody's airspace, it's called a nuisance. And then the police department can be called.
Okay.
And that can be acted on.
Then you, then you'll have a remedy.
That, that, that's what they told me.
Burning of firewood itself, approved firewood, is not illegal.
Okay, what we're hearing is, what are you gonna do with the wood you're about to burn?
Right, how are you gonna store it?
How are you gonna just-
Pre-burned wood, perhaps.
Or do we need this?
Absolutely, that's my point. Do we need it?
I'm saying, no.
Little Wally, he's tough, isn't he?
Okay, let's take an informal poll. Start with Commissioner Pill. Your thoughts on this, do we need a text amendment, or don't we? We'll start from there. If the consensus is we need one, then let's define it.
Before I answer, is there anything else that our attorney would like to tell us about this? Or have you pretty much summed up everything in your last couple of comments?
I think, from everything that I've said throughout the night, I think I've said everything. You may have missed something, if you bring it up again, I'd be-
I think you do a good job. I really do. Remember, I'm next, so.
Well, my, my ultimate goal would be to have no ordinance or legislation. If we feel that, if the majority feels that we need to define something, I prefer simpler is better. I do think that four feet is a height restriction. I think easements, setbacks, and property lines should be avoided. I think it's contingent upon the homeowner that owns the wood to be responsible for its upkeep and storage. And I also think that we should be far greater than the 48 square feet to allow for people who want to buy low and burn wood to heat their homes.
Commissioner Anton?
I also agree. I don't think we should have a ordinance on it. It's been going on as long as it has, I'm against more government, as usual. But if you're gonna put something up to the board, we are a recommending body that goes up to the board. So if they look at this, they're gonna wanna say, what do we think? What's our input to give them guidance to something that they're, if they're gonna do something? I'd rather give them some guidance of some sort than give them nothing. Now, I'm, I'll go on and say it again, I'll even go to the board meeting and say, I think we should do nothing. Because as it has been going on, it should be common sense. But if they are looking for us to give them some recommendations, we should, we are, it's our job to give them a recommendation. And I think the vague is better, just like Commissioner Pill said. But it's a touchy situation. I mean, if you don't do anything, then you're gonna let this go on, it could go on, or we could be in a bad position, because we're not even saying you can store wood in the town. Obviously, you can, because people have fireplaces, and I have a fireplace. I'm for not doing anything, but I'm also for giving the board something to look at. Or something to have, to give them a feeling of what we think. Just standing up there and saying, we're not doing anything, then they're gonna go, it could possibly go, then no firewood in the town, or, you know, you can have 10 pieces of firewood. And we're supposed to recommend something to them, give them our wisdom, or Wally's wisdom. That's all I got.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I think very, it's very important that we give the board something, and I feel that what I'd like to give them is, leave it alone.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I feel we should give them something as well, but being that we don't have anything right now, it's, it's just potentially a problem. I mean, it may be one case right now, it may not happen again for a while, but it may come up again. And the fact that we don't have, we don't allow it right now, it's kinda, it's like, what if somebody, something else happens, and, and they can just say, well, you know what? You're not supposed to have it at all. You can't store it right now.
Good point.
So, nobody can have it, you know, so that can really be a problem. We need to have at least a minimal, you know, guideline ordinance, as I said before, just so simple, you know, can't be over four foot tall, and can't be on easements, you know, or front yard, you know.
Commissioner Fidesco, you just said it, though. If you're not allowed to have it, and you're breaking, and you're breaking the rules, you're doing something stupid, then we should, the, the village management should be to walk in and say, you're not allowed to have firewood, it's all gone, get it gone.
Yeah, but we, we all know practically, there's many people in town, and practically, you can't just go to every household and say, well, Gene, you know what? You have firewood, you're not allowed to have that.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying if you do something wrong, if you're doing something stupid, then they'll come and tell you, you're stupid, you get to get rid of your firewood, but the guys next door can keep their firewood because they didn't do anything wrong with it.
Yeah, but then they're gonna complain because of the neighbor, because it says that I can't have it, he shouldn't have it, so.
Oh, then, too bad, don't do anything stupid. So what Wally's saying is almost right now, if you look at it, you're not allowed to have it in town. So couldn't you go to someone who's not, say I'm, say I'm putting it in my front yard and making stick animals out of the logs, and my neighbors don't like it? Couldn't the village manager come and say, look, you're not allowed to have firewood in your yard, anywhere, get it gone? Right? You're not allowed, it's not even on, you're not even allowed to have it.
May I ask staff a question? Does the current ordinance prohibit firewood, or not address firewood?
It's not addressed, and because it's on this structure-
See, it's all by omission.
That's a difference, that's really a different story.
Different than, I assumed that it was-
It goes back to the structure, that there's any accessory structure that's not explicitly listed in the table within the zoning ordinance is not allowed.
And that's an interpretation, it's, it's by omission that it's illegal.
That's a structure.
Okay.
Not the firewood.
That I kept going to.
All right, so.
But is the stacking of firewood a temporary structure? Do we need to regulate that?
It will never be unless you make it so.
So.
It has never been-
Let's take, let's take-
It will never be until you make it.
Firewood out of it. People stack up things in their yard.
No, no, don't do that.
Temporarily.
Don't go there. We are talking about firewood. It has never been a structure, it will never be until you make it one.
Well, the stacking of, or-
I mean, I mean-
A pile of pebbles in somebody's yard, are we gonna allow, like, that sort of a thing to sit there? They're not gonna do anything with it, they're just gonna-
It won't be until you make, until you make it an issue. It won't be, it won't be an issue until you make it.
Okay, let's go.
I don't, I don't think we have enough knowledge as far as, I know I don't, about what it takes for, to, to burn wood in a house for a year. I don't know how many times you have to re, re, re-stack, resupply your pile, you know, and I'm not comfortable legislating something I don't know anything about for someone who obviously knows what they're doing. And I, I kind of understand the four-foot-high as a safety thing, but that's, that's it. You know, and just to legislate something for the act of legislating it is ridiculous. And, and if, if the trustees take that as our suggestion, and go somewhere else with it, in another direction, or accept that and say, this is, well, we will, the city, the village will deal with this illegal structure, this 12-foot monstrosity, and we shouldn't even be talking about it.
We're not.
The city, the city will take, deal with that.
We are not talking about that.
Right. And three-foot-high, if we give them anything, we give them three-foot-high, four-foot-high.
My thoughts. I think it should be addressed in that firewood would be permitted to be stored in a yard, a rear yard, not in any easements whatsoever. Never to be stored over four foot in height, just plain common sense, but let's give it a height. And let's not quantify any length or width, but let's also specify according to what is claimed the police, the fire department says, seasoned, um-
They just call it seasoned firewood.
Seasoned firewood. No construction lumber whatsoever.
I'm thinking this isn't going to be unanimous.
I can't burn cut-off two-by-fours? Come on.
He's old school. I gotta go with old school.
How does that sound to anybody? Thoughts on it?
I think the definition of firewood is seasoned firewood. I mean, you know, I just-
Okay, seasoned firewood.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Storing of seasoned firewood would be permitted in a rear yard, never to be stacked over four foot high, never on dirt, and never in an easement.
Well, I mean, the comment I made earlier about the side yard, I mean, as long as it's not front yard, there are people with, with rather substantial side yards, and it might be to their benefit to have, you know, stored in the side yard, as long as it's, you know, possible, doesn't become a fence, you know. I think as long as it's not in the front yard, you know, and depending on the type of property you have, you, you might be able to, in certain circumstances, store it in the side yard. So I don't wanna restrict those people who can from doing so, you know?
One alternative could be outside of the required setback of whatever district. Most of the community has a six-foot setback from the property line.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
We've been saying easement a lot this evening, but not all properties have easements.
Well, easement or setback.
Right, yeah.
And, and, but don't restrict the side yard in those, there, there are some cases that people have rather substantial side yards. And you don't wanna force them, if they've been storing it there for 20 years, to have them move it to the backyard. You know, it doesn't make sense. It's a regulation that doesn't make sense. And I don't know anybody that would ever store it in a front yard, so that's not gonna impact anybody.
What do you ask again, guys? Does Donners, does Hinsdale, does Darien, does Clarendon Hills, do they have an ordinance on this? Have they found it?
Hinsdale. Hinsdale does.
Hinsdale does, okay.
So what do they rec, what do they have? I don't believe seeing anything.
I'm looking at Green Bay and-
Seasoned dry firewood of dimensions appropriate to safely fit within the container.
So they require it in an approved container that's manufactured for the storage of wood?
Must be located above ground and should not be built into the ground or located below grade.
Okay, I missed that one. That's just for the burning of the wood?
The burning, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the extent of their, see, what I'm telling you guys, you don't wanna listen, this is unnecessary.
This is just a starting point based on advice from our prosecuting attorneys so that we can legalize a requirement. I'm sorry?
This is the camel's head in a tent. Why need it? Nobody else has it, you know, you'll find one or two here and there. But, again, why legislate over an anecdotal situation which, when, I don't want, I shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna say it. When this issue is solved, if you have a problem between neighbors, they'll find another thing to have a problem over.
I would go back to Stan's example about building firewood animals in his front yard. If we were to bust Stan for having firewood animals in his front yard, and said, you know, you weren't allowed, you're not allowed to store firewood, usually that, that type of person will come back to the village and say, well, what about all these other people that are storing firewood? And then they'll immediately go after all of their surrounding neighbors who have appropriately-sized, neatly-stacked, nice firewood in their rear yards, but then- But then, because they've made a complaint, we have to...
I understand.
Then we have to go for them.
You are absolutely responding to a complaint.
Right.
And it's, and as I say, it's very slippery slope to legislate on the basis of anecdotal situations. It's just, it's just not right. If you have a predominating circumstance that affects many people, then you begin to think about legislation. This is not one of them. This is absolutely not one of them.
I like it. Well, so we're going to put it to a vote and see what's going to happen? We talked it out.
Well, are we talking about not legislating it at all? Or are we just giving the board some...
Direction.
With the board...
Sort of parameters, I think.
I got a question.
The chairman indicated that...
Is the board asking for this, though? Is this what the board is asking for?
No, I'm just saying, what are we going to be voting on?
Right now, here's what we're going to be voting on. We have a published regulation, we have a published text amendment, Article 13 here, which you all have. I'll read it. Firewood storage regulation, this is what is proposed by the village. Firewood storage regulations. A firewood pile shall not be located in any setback or drainage or utilities. A firewood pile shall not exceed four feet in height, six feet in side length, and shall not exceed 30 square feet in total ground or base area. The firewood shall be neatly stacked in the firewood pile and be comprised of raw lumber, and shall not include chemically treated, pressure-treated, glued, laminated, or similar types of treated wood. That, gentlemen, is what we are voting on tonight. That is what's published.
Let's get a vote...
We can make an amendment, we can make a second motion that this is what we would like to see, different parameters attached. But this is what we are voting on.
Well, we can't, we can't rewrite what we're voting on. That's what, which is published.
This is what is published.
And so we should vote on it.
That's what I just said, yeah.
You can make a motion to amend. If they chose to. You can vote on that, amend it.
That can be a second motion, a separate motion, though.
Right, right.
But this is our primary motion, this is what we have to vote on. We've all had a lot of discussion. So I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, the aforementioned Item 13. I don't think I have to read it again, do I?
No.
May I ask a question first?
After a second.
After a second, okay.
So I would look for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Fes, Commissioner Fidesco. Questions on the motion?
Yes. My question is, is if we, if we feel that we want to make an amendment to this as it stands, we should vote against it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a question, I don't know if this is more for staff, but in far, as far as the orderly sequence of events, does this, the fact that it appears on our agenda, does that automatically mean it goes to the village board?
It goes to the village board, okay. Well, first of all, to clarify, what is on the agenda, what was published, is simply what you see on the one-page agenda. So that says amend Article 4, Appendix A, Section 4.05 to permit firewood enclosures in the rear yard under certain circumstances. The paragraph that Chairman Richard read was the recommendation or the starting point. So I guess that can be voted on in its form or amended prior to vote because of the language that was published.
This may be an improper motion, first of all, because this is really, I think, what we're supposed to be voting on, not this paragraph. We're supposed to be voting on this one line. And my question then is...
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Yeah, okay.
Follow-up. So the board will get your recommendation exactly as it's stated for the record, and then any additional recommendations that are made on top of that. So there will be clarifying language with additional discussion.
Could we vote that it not go to the board?
You could vote to postpone or request additional information. I know that there's been, you know...
So we vote it down and rewrite it?
Based on my first question, if we're only voting on this one page, you know, we're just saying yea or nay, shall we amend it? So in this particular case, in order to change this proposed language, we would need to vote yes if we wanted to put any language...
True.
To the village board.
To put any parameters in.
Any parameters at all. So we would have to vote yes if we were to do anything. Otherwise, we're voting, we're voting to not put any, anything in.
And to leave it as it is?
As it is.
You vote no, you leave it as it is.
You leave it... You leave it without any parameters.
Without any parameters, correct.
All right, now, that I have been corrected. We are amending Article 4, Appendix A, Section 4.05 to permit firewood enclosures in the rear yard under certain circumstances. Enclosures.
And if you vote no...
Now, is a stack of firewood per se...
An enclosure.
An enclosure? Or is a wood frame, a metal frame, a housing considered an enclosure? But is the wood itself considered an enclosure?
And if you stack it on, if you stack it on, as the chairman stated earlier, a pile of stone and has no sides to it whatsoever, is that an enclosure?
I would think not by...
I would think not.
I'm going to go back one step further and ask, what is Article 4 again?
It's the permitted accessory structures.
Yeah, see, this is, this is where we go wrong. You're trying to tie it to something that's unrelated absolutely. You're trying to try firewood to a structure. To permitted structure. And I would, I would submit to you that we be allowed to vote as to whether we have any legislation or not. Rather than to put us in a position to say, we consider firewood in our backyard to be a structure, therefore, it falls under Article 4.
Some store it in a structure and others do not as...
Well, in an enclosure.
Structure, enclosure, whatever. But it's a catch-22 if you don't want one in there.
There are things as temporary structures.
Wally, I can agree with you in that if we were to vote no on this to permit a firewood enclosure in the rear yard, if we vote no on that...
It's dead.
Okay?
We don't go any further.
We are not touching whether or not you can store firewood on the ground. We're not touching that whatsoever.
What are we touching?
We are just saying, if we vote no, we are saying...
That we shouldn't amend this article at all.
We should not amend this and therefore...
Leave it the way it is right now.
Leave it late.
Structures are not allowed as per our existing code. Structure meaning sides and atop encompassing the firewood.
I would like the opportunity, and it's only because of the way they have framed this that has not allowed me to say, leave it alone. They have framed it in such a way that I don't have that opportunity.
Sure you do. If you vote no on this, we are not permitting firewood enclosures in the yard.
We're not approving an amendment.
We are not approving the text amendment.
That's what I say, I don't want a text amendment.
That's why you would vote no.
Yeah, that's why you would vote no.
On this question.
You have this opportunity.
Okay.
Just so long as I...
I think we've talked this item to death.
We're pretty good.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning, Item 12025. Item A, amend Article 4, Appendix A, Section 4.05, Paragraph E, to permit firewood enclosures in the rear yard under certain circumstances.
So moved.
I think we need a motion as to whether you want to amend or not amend. So we know what we're voting on.
We can come up with an amendment later after we vote yea or nay on this.
Well, the question is, do you want to amend it, yes or no?
As it stands now, no, and just vote on it.
Okay, and he said, he so moved, but to amend or not amend?
To not amend. Okay.
That's motioned, that's a motion by Commissioner Anton. Do I have a second?
I don't, I don't see that there can be a question, that it's written clearly that it's to amend.
The second is by Commissioner Thomas. Now, let's clarify.
The first word is amend.
We wouldn't really have any first. If he doesn't want to amend it...
You would, you would vote no.
He would vote no, so he wouldn't so move to amend it.
We are leaving the status quo as it stands right now by voting no.
Right.
Yes.
Is there a second on the...
That's by Commissioner Thomas. Is everybody clear on the voting? Okay, now... No further questions on the motion?
Well, we should probably have a roll call then.
Oh, we're going to have one.
Okay.
May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Van Buren votes no. Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Fidesco?
No.
Commissioner Anton?
No.
Commissioner Pill?
No.
And Chairman Richard?
No. Now, this does not preclude, as I understand it, the village pursuing someone that has enclosed their firewood.
No, we still are...
With sides and a roof.
No, we still have the... What is it, number 32, which indicates that other accessory structures and uses are not allowed.
Okay.
It wasn't enumerated in that list. It's the other, it falls under other, not allowed.
Does anybody care to make any motion to amend or to recommend to the Board of Trustees? Any further ideas on this? Or shall we just let this stand the way it is?
I think we should just let it stand the way it is, and after the trustees watch the tape and see our views on Wally's slippery slope. And they can choose then whether to go take that path or not.
I would think the minutes would also reflect that. Hopefully, they'll be available for them in a timely fashion and be able to utilize those.
I think the minute should reflect that the vote was zero to six on the amendment.
If there is something else that can be proposed, another, some other verbiage within the ordinance, ordinances that exist, that speaks to firewood and not structures or containers as this proposed amendment did, then maybe we can do something. Maybe we can recommend something. But as it sits, we can't.
All right. No further questions? Hey, before we motion to adjourn, I hope to see everybody at The Taste this weekend. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned.